Welcome to Park County's own Hurricane Hill Botanicals. Where it's been said you'll find the best handcrafted soap on the planet. In addition to that, we've got a great selection of essential oils, body care products, even CBD products. Can't miss out on our big selection of herbal teas, smudge sticks, even incense. Check our website for hours.
Yeah, we're ready. We'll call them in order. Okay, Commissioner Mace.
Really not much going on. As you know, the snow event shut the courthouse for a couple of days. And, but I was glad they came in the first day. We don't go to noon. Chris with emergency management thought the bad stuff wasn't going to get there till probably two or three in the afternoon. So obviously we want to get as much time as we can. So we hope to get a half day, but there's no reason to push that line. So we released everybody at 11 o'clock and then they were closed on Friday as well. Don did a great job of cleaning around the courthouse. That little tractor we have does pretty, pretty well for most things. There were some drifts that were just too big even for him to get through on the northwest corner, but he got them, got them the next day finally. So we got them there. I actually came in and shelved a path from the west side. I think we have some parkers on that side of the street, but there really wasn't many spaces of parking. So I shelved in itself to get to the lower entrance on the west side. And then Don finished it all the next day. We got back Monday, but he was in Saturday working on his, on his time trying to get, trying to keep up with it, but it was just, just too much. He is going to purchase a, a snow blower that will throw better than what he has on the tractor. You've got a place he can't get with the tractor. He has to have a bow to get there, like the ramps down through the, down the front, down the sidewalk. So he's investigating getting one of those. I think other than that courthouse wise, everything went fine. County wise, Justin made to say something to it, but I was proud of us. There were very few slide offs, I understand, very few problems. So people adhered to it. As you know, we always ain't go to those travel advisors where we restrict. We did not go to the point. We had the option on the red setting. We had the option of going to restricting driving to emergency vehicles only. But on that red spread, that's what's recommended, but we can, because for the red, we have to sign an emergency declaration, which we have to do to move to red. And we do have the option to go ahead and virtually closing the road to everything but emergency vehicles. We didn't do that. People could get to work. And it really had no instance of people getting stuck in the road as far as I know and in a way. But that's why that much snow number is difficult. The problem is cars or vehicles who've tried to get out, some working, some playing, get stuck in the road. Now the highway department can't do their job. They can't get down the road and get them cleaned up. So that's, that was not a problem this time. The only problem we had, as you're aware of, I want to make sure you're, you're up to speed on that. We had an incident at the Boucher Bridge. Had a county truck, county truck driver go through the bridge and had his bed up a little bit. He was, he forgot the bed was up. It took out both ends of the bridge, took out all of the cross ties. We were fortunate. There was not a windstorm with the other storm because Dan's concerned that it probably could have collapsed. Just because you've got the sides up there with nothing supporting them across, across tie wise. The, that's really a two-stage problem for the commissioners and for Randy on, on the driver. If it was just going through a bridge that he was allowed to go through and he had the bed raised, that's an accident. I understand those things happening. We had somebody take out the end of the highway barn. They were working on the truck. This is a couple of years ago on a truck in the highway barn. Got done with it. Driver just drove through with bed up, took a hole out the end of the, end of barn. So that part would have been excusable probably, but the part that wasn't that excusable and led to us letting him go. Was that empty. Those trucks are 13 tons, 26,000 pounds. He had sand on it. He had blade on the front, sander on the back. Clearly marked, I've got pictures, clearly marked both entrances that it's a three-ton bridge. So he made the decision to take his truck through a three-ton bridge, exposing how he, he could have killed himself. He could have gone through the floor of the bridge. And it had a real serious thing. So I hate it. I don't cast any aspersions on his character whatsoever. It's just that you broke every rule we've been told and drivers have been told specifically by Randy not to cross any covered bridges. They do cross some of the concrete bridges when they're, when they're plowing. But as you know, most of those bridges have signs that emergency vehicles for the occasional crossing can cross those bridges at a, at a higher rate. It's just not for the everyday use. So we did let, have to let the driver go. And the reason was for the failure to follow instructions and subordination and just, um, whatever word you want to use, just for decision making on his part. So that's all he was left for. Not for the damage to the bridge, but for the crossing the bridge. The damage to the bridge was caused by the raised bread bed and that's an accident. I can understand that. It's like the kid, and you mentioned it compared it. It's like the driver that rolled the truck down on a 100, down on the slab where he drove down the slab. Got on the concrete slab. He was sanding it, got on the concrete slab and it just slid off and dropped off the side and rolled over. That was a mistake. That was an accident. He shouldn't have backed down, but he was a young driver and Randy hadn't told him that he needed to back down. Some things you just think people figure out, but it didn't. So that was an accident. So that's why I came looking fired for that. If it should happen again, of course you would be, but that, that was not the case. No one hates more than me in firing somebody. I hate to see a family lose their income. I hate to see someone lose their position. And equally horrible, I hate to see us lose a truck driver. It's hard enough getting the truck drivers the way they are. But I just want you to know that's where we are. So we're moving on from that point.
So are we going to have to do something to try to secure that bridge or have we done something?
Already done so. It's closed and the highway department's going to start putting the cross ties back up. So it's really should, should be fine.
So you think now if we have some wind that we'll survive a storm or?
Even hit some of the bridges, not all, but some of them have wire rods going from side to side as support. They hit one of those in the middle at the very peak of the arch and a splice and it jerked out a probably a six-foot section. Split the, split the upper cord and split it and pull it out.
So we're talking about, oh, split the big?
The big beams on top or run, run, fold them across the top. Not the arch itself, but the beams, but the upper cord going across. That is reparable. Dan, Dan went out there with me after our commissioner meeting. And to my surprise, and the piece is still there, in those kinds of situations where that beam has been, where it's been split and pulled out. That can actually be epoxy back on, bolt epoxy and then bolted. And that joint, that seam is actually stronger than the wood is, which amazes me, but that's, that's the way that is. All kinds of tests show that you take a split piece like that, epoxy it back in place, bolt it in, allow the epoxy to take its job. And it will split someplace else before we'll ever split there. Hard to believe that epoxy is stronger than resin in the wood, but it is. So that's the way it works. What else you need to know?
Any other questions for Commissioner Mace?
I mean, it's not going to, it's going to help that cause.
So they have been specifically instructed not to cross any covered bridges with their, with their trucks. And he, he went through it. He went on and then he stopped just a short way down and.
How could you not feel that way?
At what point after you hit the first two or three of those, do you not realize that you've done something?
Yeah, that's exactly. So you don't know why. So we did, Randy put him back out on the road and drive because his truck was fine and the use. But I had Randy pulling him off the road, taking him to the barn. We had Sheriff's Department come and do breathalyzer, guess at all zeros on that. Had him go down to the hospital to do a blood test. We haven't got the results back on that yet. I really expect that to be clean, but you won't know until you get it done. But you have to know what the, what the situation is. But they have all been told. So it was just a, it was just a decision on his part to go against that and drive across that bridge anyway. And like I said, those are loaded empty. They're 13 tons. You've got a load of sand on there. That's probably 10 tons. And you got the blade and you got the sander. So you've probably got a 20-ton truck going across a three-ton bridge. Just not a good choice. It's a liability hanging out there. We just can't have that.
Okay. Anything else from Commissioner's side?
Yeah, I went to dentist yesterday. He messed up my thing on the hair. So it was reasonable to do that. So that's when you know it's not a good place.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing. Sheriff, we're going to move on.
He might hit her first. I've got a few things, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a lot. We did really well this year on our ratio study. We, well, on our sales file that leads to the ratio study. We submitted it one afternoon. The next morning it was approved. So that's a record for Park County and I'm very proud of that. Just to let you know, started our ratio study process. Mine alone's going up 21%, my assessment. So, um, it's market set.
You're talking about you're like your house thing.
My house and my, yeah.
Assessment, the assessment.
The assessment. That doesn't mean taxes.
Yeah, let's be clear.
Yes, very clear. It's not the taxes. It is the assessment, which is based on market value. And we rolled mobile homes to the auditor. I told you that last time. We have balanced those. It's been sent to the state. We're compliant with those. So things are looking good.
You did okay.
Hey, okay. Yep. Cindy?
No, nothing.
Nothing. Okay, Sheriff, you're on. Do you want to come? Yeah. Do you want to come? Do you want to sit up here too or whatever you want to do?
Yeah, I've got several things, but a lot of it I think I can breeze through pretty quick. No more requests.
While you pass those out, the third set of doors are done. It's not installed yet, but they will be making that change and sending the fourth set of doors up there.
They look nice. I was in there the other day. They look nice.
Um, you got a packet of different things. I think there's three different things in there. There's fifty inmates in jail today. DOC filling. We ended the year at $145,669 for the end of the year. We averaged $13,013 per month for that. Again, we didn't house any out of county inmates as all DOC just due to COVID. Have one COVID staff member now. Had a few inmates so far this year, but seems to be kind of slowing down to where we were year in. In that stuff is a, I think the first one we have is our annual jail inspection. That might be the first one.
That's just the jail report.
Yeah, the state jail inspector is there right now. So we have to have that completed for him, but we also file that, I think, with the clerk's office. So that's just kind of, I guess, stats basically, info on the jail. There was, I don't remember what the number was now, 700 and some people, 733 people booked into the jail, which was higher than the previous year. But it was lower than 2019 when we had 917, I think, or 905, but that was pre-COVID when we were at 905. So, so it is starting to pick back up. The annual commissary report, it was due last month, but that's moved this month. So you can see that. I think as for that report, it's at 155,000 is where that stands. A little bit more now. We still have our parking lot job that they didn't get to last year. We're supposed to be first on the list this spring. We're going to repay some of it and then repair other parts. It's getting improved by the state. So that and then we're going to buy two cars. So, so some of that money we are spending. So I'm just kind of saving it. The compensation agreement, my contract, I think is the next thing in there. But it's exactly the same as it was the previous years. It's still at 85,000. Think the augur has the original. The commissioners, I presented to them last month. So do you have that too? We can approve it today?
I have the original.
I think so.
I don't think I do. If I do, it's.
I thought she'd kept it.
We can approve it today and then, and then we can sign it.
Sign it the day they approved it.
We can sign one or?
Did you email it to me or did you?
No, I think one, well, I guess you would. I mean, Dan and.
I don't want to approve it.
I can get another one if we need to.
Well, what we can do, we can go ahead and prove it today and then, and then I'll sign it whenever somebody gets a copy to me.
Yeah, there is a copy of that in there.
Yeah, it hasn't changed many, so.
No, it's the right one. It's signed on the 21st.
Okay. Well, we can just sign one of these.
Yeah, because Mace is here. I mean, they approved it on whatever their.
It might, it might no, because I don't think Justin talks about this adequately. I mean, it is a good deal for us as well, because he does have access to all the commissary money from the state. He doesn't take that. But his sheriff before him worked out where they turned all that money back into the general, into the fund to use and just took a straight salary. And that's what it's for. So I think that's, that's a good relationship, I think.
Sign that or he's going to sign it or?
It'd be good.
It'd be done.
That's fine. Go ahead. Sorry.
Let's see what I, oh, I think it was Tuesday. We got a person come in. They did their smoke detector, fire suppression system test. So we're good on that. Last thing, we're basically three deputies down. Chris McCann's still out on medical. No guarantees he'll come back. Hopefully he does. We did hire one new deputy Monday. He started Monday. Of course, he doesn't have any academy experience. So we're looking at August for the earliest class. We can get him in. Of course, that's four months. I'd put him into January before we could get him back. He'll probably be in training most of the time leading up to that. We're in the process of hiring a second person now. Haven't done interviews, but we did the application process. So probably be a couple of weeks before we hire a second person. We did have somebody apply that was a previous deputy, left in good standing, has the academy, is also firearms instructor, which we're short on our department. We need that. He, he's a presently a police officer with the state. It's Eddie McCarg is who it is, lives at, by Mansfield. But he's still an active police officer, current police officer. He's got all the service, been through the academy. I don't remember how many years he'd put on with us, maybe 10 or 12. Like I said, left in good standing, pretty, pretty good officer, would take very little training. His only stipulation is that they're paying him so much, he will be forced out at the end of the year due to his age. The state will make him retire. So we had the opening. He saw an opportunity, but his only, his only hardship is he would have to have more money in order to come to our department. He ran the numbers. He asked if I would ask the council if he would honor his longevity from his previous years of service. Which he would get credit for, I guess he had less than, he had less than 15, but more than 10. So it would be $4,000 where he could justify leaving his state job and coming back to us just to get that salary up there.
So he leaves at the end of the year regardless?
Yeah. Yeah, they'll, they'll force him out. Of course, we don't have any age limits for our department, but he was, his pension will stop. He was receiving it from us, but it'll stop if we were to hire him and he can start paying back into that. So he had checked everything else. So there wouldn't be an issue if we did hire him back. But like I said, just for him to be able to, but we are in a mess and like I said, if we got to. Hopefully we don't have to hire two more, but if we do, there's nobody else in the pool that's got the academy.
Well, with the summer coming, I assume your call volume is going to only increase. I mean, to me, it seems like it's a reasonable request. I mean, we've got somebody we can just put in a vehicle and go.
And like I said, he'd probably need less than a week just to get caught up on the.
Right. We don't have to pay to send him to the academy and we don't have to, you know. Of course, I remember when he was a deputy, he was fine. I mean, he's not one that you would have to, there'll ever be an issue with, I'm sure. You know, we'd have to grant an exception to our, to our ordinance, I guess.
Our resolution, yeah. He, he will be eligible for the stipends and, and, and his situation, having been to the academy and being a firearms instructor. That will come with $2,000 stipends on top of the normal salary for a deputy per our resolution on that. When Justin and I talked about this, we agreed that we believe at this point that he has at least 10, but not 15, which would put him in the $4,000 in the second tier in longevity. But in resolution 2018 dash 20, we'll have to, to grant an exception to that resolution for this case if we award him those years. And that's how we'll have to.
It's not a reasonable part. We can't grant an exception, is there? It's our resolution.
It's your resolution. So from that, I, I agree with what's been said. I think, you know, first of all, it's become very difficult for the sheriff to, to hire law enforcement officers, particularly ones that are already trained. And to, even if you go through hiring a new one, as he's already elaborated to with the last one you were talking about this time next year, before that person is, is fully trained and capable. So with summer coming and the shorthandedness, I would, I would support granting the exception for this case.
Well, you've saved the money. I mean, with all of the, with these vacancies, I mean, we're not paying you. Well, we're paying one of the three, but the other two, we've not been paying anybody. So you've learned, you've saved more than, you've saved the 4,000 and more.
Yeah.
If you don't have any help out there, I don't, you know.
It doesn't matter.
Can't really expect you to try to answer calls when you don't have enough people.
And yeah, and I don't, we're going to have one going through the academy in August. I, you know, I'd hate to have to have sent two going through in August and.
Right. But we're going to burn out our other people too. The other, that's the other thing. I mean, I assume that all the rest of you are having to pick up slack or they are, or you are, or somebody is or will have to.
Yeah, it's already happened. So.
I mean, if you're going to burn out the rest of our people, why?
Will he be able to start?
I mean, when do you think he'll be able to start?
We've talked about this a lot. So. We had talked, I think either at the end of this month or the very first part of March, he had already given his bosses a heads up. So.
You think relatively soon then?
Oh, yeah. 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 Within the next two or three weeks. So.
I'm looking two week notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably the sooner the better. Never mind. I.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we're ready to hire. I mean, we can hire now. So.
Any word out of Vigo County or Terre Haute on whether or not they're going to do a remote academy this year?
Officially no, but we talked to somebody and they didn't think that they were going to do that again. It would be nice if they would, but yeah, it doesn't sound like.
Well, if the council's, uh. We'll need to vote on that. If we just offer a simple motion that we will grant the exception, we'll grant it for, I just, for Mr. McCarg. You know, it's a one-time only based on given this certain, certain, certain events that we're on. So needing, nobody need to think that this is going to be a regular occurrence, but.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Most been made second to grant, to grant exception for Eddie McCarg for longevity pay, all in paper.
Aye.
Toast. There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
I covered everything.
Covered everything.
Thanks.
All right. We have no, we have no public. We'll move on. So Mr. Clutter is here today. I asked him to come down. Welcome, Bob. It was good to see you. We had talked amongst our, a little bit at our last meeting. Maybe we ought to adopt something relative to virtual meetings and attendance. We hope we don't necessarily have to have it. I'll let you kind of give the background and, and we'll go from there. We, they have a, thinking they're, I get a copy of the, the draft ordinance that you sent me.
Okay. Yeah. So the legislature last year in response to COVID predominantly, but also with the increased enhanced technology that Commissioner Mace utilized in Florida apparently with Zoom and other, other types of media that allow for virtual or remote appearance at meetings. So there are, there are quite a few restrictions. Those are set forth in the ordinance. One of which that probably the most important is that there always has to be at least a quorum of members that attend in person. The second restriction is that the public is also able to simultaneously attend and observe by the virtual platform, whatever that is, whatever you use, whether it's Teams or Zoom or whatever, that there's some public announcements so that members of the public can also attend virtually. Any member must participate by video and audio conferencing. So it can just be a telephone call. The memorandum or minutes of the meeting must be prepared stating which members appeared in person and which appeared virtually. And also, uh, members of the public that attended remotely or virtually. All votes taken during that meeting must be by a roll call. So each member individually has to state their position on a vote. A member may not attend more than 50% of the meetings virtually unless they satisfy a separate provision of the statute. Basically if there's medical reasons for not attending. And there's, there's a couple of other minor ones listed. And then probably another obviously important area is that the member may not attend the meeting virtually. If the council is taking final action to adopt a budget, make a reduction in personnel, initiate a referendum, establish or increase a fee, establish or increase a penalty, or use the county's eminent domain authority, which doesn't apply to the council, but nonetheless is in there. Or to establish or raise a new tax.
Question about that part, just for the sake of argument here. If you're, if you're having a meeting and some member, number of the members are remote and one of these subjects is on the agenda, can they just not participate in that part or does that have to then be a separate meeting with everybody present?
They could not participate in that particular vote.
And it would still be a legitimate vote?
Yes, sir.
As far as the public's participation, I mean, we're, you're live streaming now. Are we now? You're just not live. So that really wouldn't just count. So we'd like for Zoom, then we would have to offer.
I could, we could arrange for it to be live if we need to.
If we need to. Well, I was just trying to figure out the public's participation.
But they can't participate through his.
They can't, they can't on a live stream. So if, if some, if Roy wanted to zoom in on a meeting, you would have to post a notice that other members of the public could also participate through, through that same Zoom platform.
Not only observe, but be able to.
During public comment.
During public comment, they could extend their, their comments.
Now you can mute them during the rest of the business part of the meeting, or they can't say something, but during the public comment time.
I do that to the department heads too.
Bet you can't do that during live meetings.
No, they don't listen anyway.
As long as you got that, can I ask a question from the commissioner's side?
Sure, sure.
So are those the requirements of it? The only question I had was, the only reason for us, the only reason I participated in Zoom from Florida in it. And one, I appeared for the other, but we had a quorum, so I didn't need to be in the meeting in Zoom, so I backed out of that one. But really the only reason for us to use Zoom would be if we didn't have a quorum, but you're saying we can't count that toward the quorum. So we'd have to have two, two of our three members out of meeting anyway. So there's really no reason for us to even have Zoom other than just to participate and observe.
Well, it allows him to have your input, I think.
Yeah.
That's all. But it doesn't allow us to have a legitimate meeting. If only we'll have one commissioner there, we can't do that as a legitimate meeting. That's good to know. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Is the emergency order still on to where we could, because you know, there for a while, the governor had some sort of emergency deal where we could. Now we didn't, but virtually, is that still in place, you think?
The last I heard is I believe it expires March 1st.
So it is still on now, but so.
For the next couple of weeks. We'll see if it gets extended.
Allow a Zoom or a remote option to make a quorum?
It does not.
It does not?
See, that was the impression we were under. What we were told by I U C C was that so long as that other member had, could see and hear what you guys were saying and you could see and hear what he was saying, that accounted for a quorum. So we, we operated on that basis that it was.
Oh, I'm sorry. You mean under the emergency.
Yes, the emergency. That's what I thought. Yeah, okay.
Yes, you're correct. I'm sorry. I thought we were.
Well, the emergency order is still in place. They, you can, and you need to make a quorum.
It, it can. Yeah. And again, I believe that expires March 1st and.
So you guys were good then.
Yes.
Yeah. So the whole idea of the emergency was to keep people coming together, to keep the party having their meetings. And I know it's changing when that goes away.
Yeah. So the, yeah, yeah. Under the emergency order, it can be used for a quorum. That's correct. But, but under the statute, once that expires, presumably March 1st. And to use this going forward, you will have to adopt an ordinance.
So really if that's the bare necessities and that's requirements, then we may as well adopt the same one. I thought that was not part of it, but if it is, then there's no reason for us not to mirror what you guys have there.
Well, that's fine. At me, you can even ask Bob to, he can whip you up one or whatever. That's fine.
Frankly, the only difference is Jake, the first line and the, and the signature lines at the bottom, it's the same.
And if Bob charges you double, we won't have to pay.
That's right.
Can you put one in there that if I'm on Zoom, they can't mute me though? Special exception to that.
Special exception.
Bob is a longtime school superintendent. Could I force a board member to be virtual?
Tough on the board.
Haven't gone very well around this state, I'll say, drop me out.
I bet it would.
Is there in in our emails back and forth, you alluded to the fact that that this is just the bare minimum. What other, and you also alluded to the fact that we could add additional uh requirements if we so desire. Do you off the top of your head, do you have any of the what, I mean, what would those be maybe?
I I haven't had any clients add additional requirements.
Well, I'm sure we won't either, but I just wondered what they might be, what they.
Yeah, for instance, you know, you could say a member could only do it once a year, or you couldn't have more than one member do it at any given time for any given.
You can make a requirement that they have to announce that they need to do that seven days in advance or something to, and then give you the chance to set the rest of it up or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, you could certainly do that and but, you know, part of this is is to respond to um, you know, vacations or if somebody's out sick or something like that, so that that in itself could be problematic if they come down with something two days before the meeting. Um, the the issue with this particular statute, I've got several issues with it, but one of which is um, the requirement that members of the public be able to utilize the same platform. Well, getting that notice out if it's if it's an emergency, you know, somebody gets sick and they still want to attend, they feel well enough to attend, but they can't make it or they're quarantined or whatever the case may be, and you don't have a lot of time. Uh, you've got twenty-four hours or something, getting the notice out to the public that they can use that platform to participate can be problematic. But that's the way the statute's drafted, so.
Yeah, you would think that we could like it, they really didn't need to put that in there since it still requires a quorum to be physically here. I don't know that that really.
It's just kind of a nod to the open door law and the public access laws, but I I think it's uh as as I mentioned, it can be a little bit problematic if it's if it's an emergency.
It's not workable.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the main reason I just wanted is to have this, uh, you know, it it can be there for any member that wants to use it once the emergencies declaration is lifted, so we'll have it, you know.
No time.
The tool in the bag, we've adopted it and then somebody can say that suddenly if they want to use it, why, we'll use it. I mean, we can manage with the Zoom and it does work and I see nothing, nothing wrong with it, so. So if you wanna, we have the same day, same
I got.
deal right there, so if if you wanna go ahead and adopt this while we can, or if you wanna think about it, I don't know if there's any.
Most approved as presented.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, we gotta do the, we gotta do the same day, same meeting first, so let's uh make a motion to.
Well, most. Pass that twenty-two dash.
O one.
O one?
Same day, same meeting uh motion for that, yeah.
Same. All fair?
Aye.
All right. Now you can do your.
Motion to press ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O two.
O one, it's the same ordinance number because that's the same day, same meeting to adopt that ordinance.
O one.
They're married together.
Okay.
I have one question, John, that I want your answer, right before we go to our meeting with it. If we arrange it for one of our members to to Zoom, then we also have to open to all the public to Zoom as well, is that correct?
Correct. And you're welcome to, if you want to use that or get in touch with Bob or you know.
Yeah, I'll just.
Okay, I agree.
That would probably be best we have them mirrored anyway, and then we won't have different policies.
Yeah.
Somebody keep track of.
I sent them to you.
Yeah, well, okay. Okay.
Did I vote?
No, we haven't voted.
All in favor, so I'm sorry, I got this stuff, me so distracted.
He could have waited until we got done.
Well, he doesn't like to wait.
I don't dislike to wait.
That's not very nice. Well, thank you, Bob, I appreciate your input. All right, we'll move on. Oh, I did hear from Greg Mormon, our surveyor. Uh, he is in need of a computer and a printer, and he said all he needs is just a basic computer printer. Apparently, his is uh acting up to the point where it uh takes several tries to get the thing to start, and he said he that he doesn't need anything elaborate. Um, I did ask him about this, you, cause there's really not any money in his budget for that. I did ask him about using his perpetuation fund to buy that, and he would do that, I think he would really rather not. Um, so I told him that I would let you all know. I'm not sure how it slipped by when we bought computers a few years ago that he didn't get one, or maybe he didn't need one, I don't know.
They asked for so little.
Story, and he doesn't ask for anything. Well, I see, I'm not, I'm just, we just need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it or how you want to pay for it.
I can tell you what a tremendous job he has done in that position.
Oh, I know, he does, and he's he he would have been here this morning, but he already had appointments set up with surveyors, and I said, don't change those for to come for this, it's not necessary, so. I don't know if you wanna. You wanna make him pay it out perpetuation, or do you want it this uh?
I want you to give this.
Take, you just want us to give it to him, well, I figured that's technical, and that's fine.
We'll just take that.
Exactly right.
I don't follow one. All right, well, we're here here's how we'll handle this, then uh I'll get hold of Greg and have him get a quote. Find out how much we're talking about here and then figure out where to where to put the claim in.
Well, I think we're probably at most a couple thousand dollars.
No, it's not gonna be, but but it's not gonna be that much. The the key's still in, you know, you're right, it's not, it's not very much, it's not like it's the money that's the issue here, it's how much is the claim and then what am I gonna find?
You wanna do it right.
So that's, you know, I would just assume we didn't try to write an ordinance to transfer money from one department to his over a computer. If we can find a place to how much it is and find it in in the commissioner's budget somewhere.
And really, that's fine.
Okay, well, I'll just have him contact you.
Yeah, tell him to get ahold of.
Good.
Okay, I'll figure it out.
Okay, well, I think we're ready to. Uh, we got the Health Department grant, is that for the nurse or to try to get a nurse still?
Yeah, this is that meeting I went to with them, I believe, where they, it's a it's a grant that that will partially fund the nurse's salary, but it's uh they work with the schools um as well. Uh, we talked about this back uh um I believe back in the uh
It's been a while.
Uh, a little bit, um, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars or I think.
Yeah, that's what I should have.
Yeah, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The agreement that we made with them was that they could pay the nurse out of this grant if they got it, um, and uh to get the hours and stuff right for uh or to get the the rate to where it needed to be, and then the corporate starts hours changed and all that stuff you recall, so.
Okay, so if we just need a motion to allow me to sign this.
Okay. So I move.
Second.
Most been made and seconded to approve the application for the grant, all favor.
Aye.
Okay, so minutes, we have this September twenty-first ones, is that right, or is that the best?
That's correct. I I friend Dr. Ronald's last time, so I found out the corrected one.
Where's the January one?
So then we need to.
The January ones are we were tabling them, did you have them done complete yet? We'll be ready for next meeting.
Okay, so before you is the September second meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from September second.
So.
Most been made seconded to approve the minutes, all favor.
Aye.
Yeah.
Don't run off, folks, you gotta.
Yeah, I'm set, so. So Laura, I have a question on the payroll. It's my understanding that um that when the maintenance supervisor, the maintenance person elected to jail, he ended up being overpaid, is that correct, or what's the story on that?
Yes.
So what is your plan to get that paid back?
I very contacted him and we're supposed to be sending you the money back.
Well, the council, we'd like to know when we receive that back, cause that money needs to go back to the sheriff's department so that they have that, so if they're short, is it about what, how much is it?
It's about thousand.
So he needs to pay that back.
He needs to do work there.
No.
No.
He was paid the full salaries of the partial salary.
Why was he paid the full salary?
There was an error when we was data entry that.
We didn't look at payroll vouchers, right?
We looked at the payroll vouchers, it was keyed in wrong and correctly.
Well, we need to get that back, so, cause that's taxpayer money, so it needs to be returned.
He's already, I already contacted him last week, we thought, and he's supposed to be sending that back.
Okay, well, it's your responsibility to get it back.
So he knows he got overpaid?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
I have his phone number and everything else, and he's moving to Kentucky, and I need to make sure I get that back.
You better hurry up, because if he gets to Kentucky, then you lose a lot of your options here, so you better, and if that doesn't work, you better start looking into that program to garnish his tax refund, tax refund or whatever to to get it, because.
We gotta have that back.
It's gotta come back, and you let it gets where he's gone out of state, then that's the end of that program too, so.
I mean, it's our fault that it's happening, but what can we do with it if it if it would get serious?
Well, actually, you can take it in small, take it after that may be an attorney question, but taking, can we take the small claims court if we overpaid him and he won't?
Yeah, yeah, certainly could. What, how much was the?
Over a thousand or so, a thousand.
Yeah, um, and you referred to the Trex program that they have that can uh seize his state tax refund.
Yeah.
Um, but depending upon when he files taxes, you probably want to jump on that pretty quickly.
That's what I'm I'm basically without ordering it happening, I'm strongly suggesting that you get him on the Trex program now before he can get out of that. He doesn't have, he doesn't have the money to pay it back.
He doesn't?
I doubt it.
He does not.
He is, he said he's going to pay back out of, once he gets his perf money, cause he was very anxious.
But he's still marked as an active employee in perf at this point too, correct?
Pardon?
He's still marked as an active employee in perf at this point, right?
No.
According to perf, he is. So how long does that take when you mark him as inactive, do you know?
Uh, except the.
I don't know the answer to that either, but.
Except perf now, cause he's already marked inactive in perf.
Well, it needs to be on back, I mean, that's giving you some options there, so.
I mean, contact perf and see if there's anything that can be withheld from his paycheck from that perf payment.
Well, I don't know that you can go do that directly with perf, but you're basically, you will lose the option of using the Trex program if you don't do that in a hurry, because he'll file his taxes, get his return.
I'll get that done today.
Well, I mean, that's
Yes.
You probably better, because if he doesn't have the money to pay it and he gets out of the state, then you don't have that option anymore. Cause he won't have an Indiana return after that, right, so. You gotta get it, and I'm just giving, we're giving you tools to pursue. If you think you can get it otherwise, then don't go through that, but.
We need to get it.
You want?
Yeah. Okay, moving on. Ready for our additionals?
Two additionals. R D C operations for thirty-five hundred and I'll send you this, was uh for all the sales disclosures and deeds and everything for the tax certificate sale, right? You overrun from that?
For next fees.
Yeah, for the attorney's fees for all that. Um, so we sold a lot of properties last year in that, so we collected some money, but it also costs to do that. Uh, K nine donation for ten thousand, that was submitted in October and never put on our agenda at any point, so it's been now put on here, uh, the sheriff's department. So it was a, oh, that was a grant from New Corlin, huh?
Yeah, yes.
So.
Okay, those are the two additionals before you.
So I move.
Second.
Most been made and seconded to approve the additionals, all favor.
Aye.
So we're down to the jury pack.
Make most pay the jury.
Most made and seconded to pay the jury, all favor.
Aye.
Committee reports, redevelopment.
Redevelopment met. Selected officers, we retain the officers that we had, um. Send to Iowa.
They aren't even there.
Who weren't there. Remained president of redevelopment, Commissioner John's the vice president, Ron DeBranson is the secretary.
Well, they could have put somebody else in there.
So uh.
I thought you were ready for campaign, John, you did good.
But I did, I did a great job, didn't I, Jim?
You're dead. That's that was highlights, that was, you know, the organizational meeting.
Okay.
Playing. Oh, yeah, there's a grant for uh like reapplying for uh more money for the revolving loan fund.
Playing, Zoe?
Uh, we met, retained same officers again as usual. Uh, we also approved and then sent on to B Z A the cheese plant up on the Marshall Road and three fifty. It's the third time that they've moved. Different issues with the neighbors, but they're basically moving around the corner, so. But if they can get through state, and that'll be, it'll be a job, that there'll be a cheese plant there on Marshall Road and three fifty in that neighborhood right there.
Okay. Courthouse Security did not meet. Cameron, did the House Solid Waste have a meeting yet, or?
Solid Waste met on Tuesday, however, I was unable to attend.
Okay, moving on, new amendment to the salary.
Another amendment to the salary ordinance, right?
This again, I'm like, no.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't catch all the mistakes at one time that I make, so. Uh, there is another mistake in the salary ordinance for uh the extracurricular line in the clerk's perpetuation fund. Um, should, that's a permanent part-time position, the hourly rate in that line was approved at twelve fifty, should have been approved at twelve seventy-five. Um, so we need to amend that to reflect what is the desire of the council to have happened in that case.
Moving through the minimum part, can I salary orders for the extracurricular clerk's office?
Most second.
All fair?
Aye.
When will that be caught up? Will it be caught up on the next payroll or on this?
The payroll here is coming out on Monday, it's already put into that payroll.
Is the back called the 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 correct hourly rate is, but is the catch up from the prior, okay, so the it'll all be caught up back to current at that.
Seven dollars.
Yeah, I announced the next thousand, but it's, we'll make sure it's right.
Been put into this payroll that's coming out on Monday, so now it's already there.
Okay, and then we have in your pocket are the encumbrances that we need to look at.
I don't have the one with me that you sent, Laura, but I assume the ones that did not have funds to be encumbered are removed from this list. Um.
A lot of our salaries, that's.
Yeah, always are.
Which is mostly what Rudy's there.
Um, hang on, I'm before we adopt this, I want to get something. You have the ones that the clerks submitted late in here, right?
Um, I hope so.
Perpetuation.
O one, O two. You do not.
Can I amend those for the next meeting?
I did submit them the next meeting, I suppose.
Yeah, we've had to add to it before, so.
Yeah, submit them the next meeting.
These would have been the ones, uh, you know, there's a uh office supplies one and postage one for general clerk, and then there's eighty-eight ninety-nine, that's the clerk, uh, four D account, remember? Those need to be in encumbrance. As long as there's funding available, and I don't have that in front of me. If there's not funding left, then that's a different animal, of course.
That first sheet, when I did that spreadsheet, that first sheet showed all the encumbrances, the second sheet was the amounts that came out of theirs. If there's enough amounts or not.
We'll see if you have them.
To make it in and then accept these again.
Well, let's see if you have them on that. No, they're not on that one we sent the other day. I didn't look at that until, just thought of. It's like there should still be some money left in all those accounts that he's, or at least the first couple he's asking for, so. Please get that in and amended uh so we can adopt that in March.
Do you want to add to? Be more glad to.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adopt the ones we have here now, so. If there's someone calling.
I like a motion to approve the, uh, encumbrances that have been submitted, report council.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the encumbrances, all fair?
Aye.
All right, we got the sheriff contract, you thought, he probably thought I forgot. So as Justin said, this is what we've been doing, there's no changes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sheriff's contract for, it's the last one for a while, Sheriff, for you, all fair?
Aye.
I just signed a little copy ahead, Laura, so.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay.
You can sign the other one.
Go ahead and, well, he's.
I have that one right there.
Anything else?
Uh, when will the, when will the H S A distribution be completed?
Um, hoping to have that done by Tuesday.
I called yesterday, my card shows my entire annual loan.
In what?
My entire, I'm a thirteen hundred. And I called yesterday, and it said I had my own thirteen hundred.
Because I'll have to check with whoever does, cause our office doesn't do all of that, so I'll have to check with the insurance.
I checked, I called, what I called for, she, my rollover was in, but she never is, but I called it. And it didn't, the rollover wasn't there, but the entire twenty-twenty-two contribution said thirteen.
Thirteen hundred?
That's what it said, and I thought, can't be right, should be six fifty, and it shouldn't be on the other month, and it said thirteen hundred, so.
So I'll have to check with the insurance company, cause I usually don't roll that over. The H S A itself?
Yeah, see, the H, of H R A.
Yeah, the auditors does, the H S A itself, through the bank account, the H R I, H R A, I believe, is done through Anthem. So I will double check on that.
Yeah, see.
Maybe want to look that, see maybe they're not.
I'm not going anywhere with it, so it doesn't matter, but, but you might.
Well, you might.
Well, yeah, I can throw it up and fix that. Me, she got your.
It's right now, I'm waiting for you, it's running there.
Your funds are only there until, once after you leave the position, then your funds are, are gone.
Yeah, but my rollover, so my roller doesn't show up till.
Till March.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
It always is March.
Yeah, I make sure that clears up, but according to them yesterday, I had my full twenty-twenty-two contribution in now. I mean, that's fine, it doesn't matter.
We intentionally made it difficult for you, you better be out here and go away.
Well, can you get this old here?
I know.
People try to make life difficult, but don't forget.
I'll get your.
Treachery. Yeah, I wouldn't even.
Well, it's, you know, the reason that I'm asking the question, cause they get asked the questions, a lot of people wanting that money in there because they've got bills to pay, so why are we?
I sent out a notice.
I saw it.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm still being asked those questions, so why did, when is it going to be there, so, it's on the record. I have nothing else.
Okay, being, anything else for the audience?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Bob, for coming.